September seventeenth, two thousand and eighteen, regular city council meeting is called to order. Everyone please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, everyone please remain standing. We'd like to ask Pastor Moden to please come and give us a prayer.
Thank you. Let us pray. Father, we thank you for this opportunity to come before your great people. And we ask, in the name of Jesus, that you have your way in this meeting. And that everyone that's in this meeting will be on one accord and have the same thing in common. We honor the man of God, first of all, we honor you, God, and we honor the mayor of this great city, the pro tem and the council, and every committee that's here, Lord. We ask that you endow them with intelligence to operate under your auspices, in the name of Jesus. We ask that you raise them up, allow money to come to this city. Allow finances to be given to this city, because they are the lenders and not the borrowers. And Father, we thank you because you have called such great people together to raise up this city and to make it better than what it is now. And Father, we ask every blessing in this name. In Jesus' name, I pray this by faith, that we will prosper, because you called us to prosper in this hour. And we thank you for the great work that's being done, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Please remain standing. We have had a moment of silence. We have lost one of our officers and a citizen. Ms. Dorothy Gardner, let me give her a moment of silence. Thank you.
Roll call.
Mayor Nolan.
Present.
Councilwoman Wiley.
Present.
Councilwoman Odin.
Present.
Councilwoman Mitchell.
Present.
Councilwoman Howard. Mayor Pro Tem Williams.
Present.
And Councilman Chisholm.
Present.
We have been present tonight, and we do have a quorum.
Good to see Councilwoman Howard back. She's on vacation.
You have Jones.
Have you ever had a chance to look at the agenda?
Yes.
Need to add anything? Subtract anything? Okay. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda.
Oh, we need to add what we talked about, the vote we took in closed session.
Okay, that ought to be item C.
What was the last name of that? Robert. Craig, okay.
So I'll make a motion with the add-on, so add-on B.
C.
C.
Support.
Support.
The property moved and supported, discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Passes. Okay, I see Wayne County Commissioner, come on up.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. Just to have a couple of quick announcements. One of the things I wanted to mention is that on the, sort of a long-term plan for roads, Middle Belt Road is scheduled as of now, and it can change depending on how quickly other roads may deteriorate. But right now, it's on the schedule to be resurfaced from Michigan Avenue to Avondale on Middle Belt. And that'll be a nice change, because I know I drive that way a lot myself, and the roughness of that road, it certainly needs it. Also, I wanted to mention that on October seventeenth, I'm hosting a job fair, a Wayne County Job Fair, with the cooperation of the administration. We're doing a job fair. It's at Schoolcraft College, the Radcliffe Branch, folks that are aware where that's at, just south of Ford Road and between Vanoy and Wayne Road. And there will be representatives there from the county for everything, from the Sheriff's Department to DPS and everything in between. So folks at home and anyone that might be looking for a new position somewhere, there will be folks there to take their applications on the spot. I think they're going to have computers set up, possibly even for them to do the applications right online. And so, I will, that's all I have tonight, but I wanted to stop by and say hello to everybody and thank you again for working with me closely.
Okay, thank you.
It'll be, let me get the, I should have done that, given you that, sorry. The, as I mentioned, it's October seventeenth, and I believe it's at ten or eleven o'clock in the morning, and I thought I had it on here, but I apologize. I will have flyers, and I'm going to get them to the city to also post, and we'll have them posted as well. But I do believe it's from ten to four-thirty in the afternoon.
As soon as we get the flyers, we'll post them and we'll send them, put them on community access. All right, thank you, Mr. Stanislaw. Did I see Jewel Jones somewhere? I think I saw him. He left? Okay, so we have no report from the state rep? Oh, come on up. When I said Jewel Jones, you're supposed to jump up and run to the microphone. You are Jewel Jones.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Well, session is out for two weeks, so the next week, session is still out, but we'll be resuming the following week. However, we did go to CBC this weekend. We saw a mayor there and also the lovely Sade. And we had a great time, great experience. Jewel spoke on a panel discussing black millennials and the things that these people are doing in the different states. So it was a great networking opportunity. We were the only people there from Michigan and also the youngest people there. So that was a great experience to have. So we would just like to say that we are still working. We have the election coming up in November, because we still have a candidate that we're running against. So it's very important for everyone to get out to vote, and yep, that's about it.
All right, well, great, well, thank you. All right, we have no presentations. We always have presentations. Strange. Consent agenda. Have you ever had a chance to look at? Any corrections, additions, deletions?
Make a motion, we accept the consent agenda, because he is?
Support.
The property moved and supported, discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Passes. Okay, move on down. Boards and commissions. We, housing, housing. We need somebody to make a motion, we need to put the housing commissioners in a slot. When they were appointed last year, we failed to put them in the individual slots, so we'll know, because the slots are staggered. So some expire at different points. So do we have anybody to make a motion? We can make a blank a motion to, I sent out an email with the suggestions, recommendations. If everybody's okay with that, we could just make a motion to put those persons in those slots.
Go move.
Okay.
Support.
Yeah, I did. It's over, a couple of weeks ago. All right, and see, just so everybody knows, our discussion, we can discuss it now. We're going to put Mabel Strohman and William Ackland's spot, expiration date of three-seventeen, so she's expired already. Kailin Smith and Ernest Hendrick's spot, who was the former chair, expiration three-nineteen. DeSala Scott and James Orr's spot, he was the resident council representative. And then Father Clifton and Ernestine Williams' spot, she was the vice president. And then Reverend George Williams and Deborah Walker's spot, she expires ten-nineteen. Father Clifton is three-nineteen, expires. So that is what we're motioning to do. All right, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Councilwoman Odin, pass.
Chuck, make a motion to reappoint Mabel Strohman to the House Commission.
Support.
The property moved, support, discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Passes. Have any other nominations?
If I got a question. How long are the terms?
Five-year terms. So Ms. Strohman would be from three-seventeen to twenty-two? Yeah, two-twenty-two, maybe?
Okay.
So that's a five-year, so hers, she's already one year into her five-year. Or more than that, actually, we're going to add. Any other questions on that? Okay. We'll move on down to new business.
Consider approval of an offer to purchase one vacant residential lot, which is located on the west side of Harrison Ave, between Pine and Andover, as duly noted, in the amount of five hundred dollars, to Marquell and Mario Robinson.
Support.
Go move.
No, it's not supposed to move.
You're doing the county, you're not? Okay, so move and supported, discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay? Passes.
Consideration and approval of a letter of intent for the solar energy project.
Support.
The property moved and supported, discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? It passes.
And item C is a motion to vote in accordance with the vote that was taken in closed session, Robin, Robert Craig.
Go move.
Support.
The property moved and supported, discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Passes. Jerome, did you want us to discuss the land copper rules? We have some notes here, I mean, I did get the email. This is beautification, what I'm looking at. Tony, we have a meeting on Thursday, right? Beautification, okay, so I'll be there at ten o'clock. Ten o'clock? At the golf course? Okay, we'll talk about it. The land copper rules? Did everybody get the email on?
I saw it, I saw it.
I, to Mayor and council, to the public and to the viewer artists, I emailed you, Mr. Mayor, to, I want Mayor and council to support GLEWA and DWSD in the process of suing, pursuing a lawsuit against MDEQ for the land and copper rule, because the new land and copper rule that they're trying to impose on us will hold the public utilities responsible for residential land and copper. So, GLEWA is the Great Lakes Water Authority, which we all are members of. They took over the water from the city of Detroit, and Detroit still has their own water fund. So the land copper rule basically states that if I discover a land and copper line in the city of Inglewood outside, I not only have to fix ours, but I have to go into your house and fix yours. And if you don't allow me into your house, you know, there's nothing really I can do. So we are having a serious issue with that, because we don't feel that no public utility should be held accountable for what's a residential house. So that's what they're trying to impose on us now. So that's why I sent it to you, I need this body, we need it from you, I mean, this body authorized you to support that argument, that case.
Okay, now we've got to figure out how we handle this, because we didn't put it on the agenda. Okay, we have membership in GLEWA, I mean, don't we get to vote as a result of our membership?
Right. But they...
What they did initially, they was doing it on their own. So we had a meeting, and we said, well, you should reach it out to all forty-three members, because it's forty-three members that belong, that make up GLEWA.
Can it wait till the next meeting?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
It has a deadline on it.
Okay.
No, no, it can't. I think the deadline is this week or next week. So it's before the next meet, lest we call it a special meet.
Okay.
And I think it's something, Mr. Mayor, I think it's something we seriously need to consider. No, this is the land and copper rule.
And we have to pay for it.
If the EPA and the MDEQ have their way, they will hold public utilities responsible for residential land, lead lines. So, well, we just had, we had that discussion this Friday in our Western Wayne Directors' meeting, which was held here. That was one of our discussions, and I know LaVonia has authorized their law department on their own to go after MDEQ, but I think it's better if we join GLEWA and DWSD instead of going out on our own.
So we actually adding our names to the lawsuit?
Yes. That's what, that's what that request is, is we in support, that we fill that out and send it back to them.
So I need, I guess, a motion to add this to the agenda, last second.
I move that we add the GLEWA lawsuit to...
The property moved and supported, discussion.
What are the rules?
About changing the agenda midstream?
Yeah, I'm looking here. Michigan Miss Pille, they're going to be, they got a conference this week, and they could be talking about it there. Everyone's talking about it, so we're just getting this and no one's explaining the rules. You know, what are the new rules, so they just come out and give us a deadline, like tomorrow?
The major concern with the rule is that they are trying to hold public utilities accountable for land and copper line in residential housing, in your house. So if I fix my line, they're saying I can not only have to fix my line, but I have to fix your line too. So how do we accomplish that?
Okay, no, because the water's coming from Great Lakes Water, okay?
It has nothing to do with the water, this is the line.
Okay, the water line.
Right, the water line is us.
But you said the utility company wants to hold us...
We're the public utility. We're the public utility for the city of Inglewood.
Okay. So...
In essence, what the state is saying, we don't know how you're going to pay for this, but we trying to impose this on you.
And they do everything.
Oh, it's mandated.
Yes.
It will be if it goes through.
So we're trying to put, get ahead of it.
All right, right now, it's just a motion to add this, so we can discuss it. Do I have any discussion on that?
And this is the water board, I mean, the...
This is a land and copper rule, the new land and copper rule coming down from the EPA, MDEQ. There's discussion right now in Lansing and what he just mentioned.
Okay.
But GLEWA and DWSD is trying to get ahead of it. We trying to block it from even getting to a law.
Well, we need to block it as quickly as we can.
Western Wayne Conference of Mayors, we did agree to support opposing it. So that's... It affects everybody, it affects every city.
Yeah.
Right. So... And actually, what will happen, if that passes, then you think our water bill is high now? Yes, because we can't pay for it.
What are the other communities, what was their position on it?
It went to all of us, it went to all of us Friday. They, GLEWA is supposed to have sent out an email a couple of weeks ago, none of us never got it. And we had a Western Wayne Conference DPSW Directors' meeting here Friday, and they were here, and they spoke about it. So we all got it Friday. So I sent it to the mayor, and I knew he was out of town, and I haven't had a chance to talk to him about it today. Had a lot going on, but everybody's against this.
Everybody's on board, all of them.
Everybody's on board, like he said, they voted for it at the conference of Western Wayne. Right, but everybody's on board. And like I said, LaVonia has deep pockets, they're going out on their own.
Yeah.
They are. Okay, well, let's first, let's take the vote on whether we're going to add this to the agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? It passes. And now, we need a motion to join the lawsuit.
I move that we join the GLEWA lawsuit against the EPA and MDEQ.
Support.
The property moved and supported, discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? It passes. Although, expensive for the lawsuit comes out of Jerome's salary. So we don't have to worry about money, we'll be fine.
It would be nice, huh?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You didn't know you were getting a raise.
It was his last-minute idea, so...
Sorry about the last minute, though.
So that's all we have for new business, and we're going to go to public participation. Tony Bailey.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Treasurer, City Clerk, City Attorney, Department Heads, the audience and those who viewing. Summer is coming to an end. In the month of September, the community cleanup, our last one with the dumpsters being put out, will be September twenty-ninth. We'll meet up at the rec at nine AM, so I hope to see everyone out.
That's all?
Yes.
What time is your meeting this week?
Okay, the Thursday meeting, that's the beautification council, that's a quarterly meeting that they have. And we start at nine-thirty with the registration and...
At ten o'clock is the program?
So you can come at ten.
Okay. Thank you. Deborah Owens. Oh, wait a minute, y'all. We're supposed to set a date for the all district advisory meeting. Okay, we can, yeah, all right, come on. Your piece of paper may be think about.
Hello, everybody.
Hello.
See my pretty shirt? I got it at Oak Street Health. And they are starting, in collaboration with the, with the Senior Commissioner on Aging, they're starting a walking club, and everybody needs to walk, right? So they gave out this really nice insulated stainless steel bottle, and it keeps liquids hot for twelve hours and cold for twenty-four hours. So if you go and register, you'll get this bottle and this nice bag, and a bottle of water, and some snacks, and a keychain. So everybody needs to walk. So if you're available every Wednesday from ten to eleven, we meet at Inglewood Park, the entrance there, and you, and we'll walk for an hour. But you have to first register at Oak Street Health. So they're doing something to better the health of people in our community. So if you are available from ten to eleven on Wednesdays until the weather changes, we'll be meeting. And the other thing I had was, there's a citizen district committee, two advisory meeting, and that's going to be on Thursday, this coming Thursday, September the twentieth, at six o'clock. And it's going to be at the Booker Dozier Recreation Complex. Please come out and show that you care about the community. There's going to be a demonstration of See Click Fix, and that's the application that was demonstrated here that you can use to report issues in your, in your neighborhood, like dumping, blight, property maintenance, noxious grass and weeds, unsafe conditions, unleashed dogs, litter, nuisances, abandoned vehicles, rental properties, et cetera. And there'll be a demonstration to show you how you can use See Click Fix to better our community. It really is an effective tool, and we have to really start using it. And it's not only, this is not only open to District Two people, but for people in every district, we would like for you to come and attend. There'll also be a demonstration of the new recycling program, because there's been a lot of questions. And a lot of people don't have access to cable TV to see the demonstration that our city clerk demonstrated, which was really great. So that'll help to clarify what you can and cannot use the recycling cans for. There will also be time that will be set aside to exchange ideas, visions, and information to improve our city. Light refreshments will be served. So I hope that many of you will come out to that meeting, even if you're not District Two. There's some flyers over on the table, I think I made enough for everybody. So pick up a flyer and come, and let's work together to improve our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Lashonda Denson?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm with Lashonda, my name is Florine Bond, Flo Bond, so to you, Mayor.
Okay.
All city council, all you city employees, and of course, my wonderful citizens of Inglewood. I was born and raised in Inglewood, seventy years I've been living here. And I have a new job. I now work at, it's funny, isn't it, Connie? I'm retired, but I now work at Oak Street Health, and I'm proud to be there. So I want to introduce my supervisor, Lashonda Denson, who's going to tell you some of the wonderful services we have at Oak Street Health.
Good evening, I really enjoy her. Love the green T-shirt. My name is Lashonda Denson, I am the outreach director for Oak Street Health at the Cherry Hill location. There are five here in Michigan now. There are, there is two in Detroit, we're in Hazel Park, South Gate, but more importantly, we are here in Inglewood. We opened in October twenty-seventeen, so we're coming up on a year now. And I'm really excited, I'm really excited to be at Oak Street Health. One of the things, and the main thing that Oak Street focuses on, is primary care for adults on Medicare. So when I thought about, before I accepted the job, you know, just thinking about, would I be able to, to grow in this community and help this community? And my passion is to be a resource for Inglewood. I have instructed my community team to make sure we have resources available. Some people have, some of you have been, I've met some of you, but we have a community room, and it's available to seniors in the community. We had a lively game of BitWiz on Friday that was very entertaining. But we have the community room, the community room is just that, it's open to the community. We have computers in there, you can use the computers at any time. If you need help with your devices, you want to get Facebook, whatever it is, we're there. We have exercise classes on Monday, all of this is complimentary. Some people come in every single day for a cup of coffee, a snack, to watch TV, and I've seen people develop friendships and relationships. And what Oak Street Health understands is that sometimes your physical ailments are not as a result of something physically happening. It's because sometimes you're lonely, you don't have, you know, friends, you don't have anything to do. And it gives you a space, a safe space and a friendly place to do that. And so, and also being a resource, we have a social worker on staff that helps assist. You know, sometimes it's difficult to think about getting your medications and paying for them if you don't have food to eat. And so we have a social worker on staff that assists with that. We have behavioral health, we have a clinical team that is there to, to take care of our patients, and is very passionate about it. And so that is something that I'm very passionate about, I'm excited to be in the Inglewood community. We brought in my outreach team, they bring in, they're responsible for going to the senior communities, the different recreational centers to inform people. So it's a new model, people aren't used to a doctor's office asking you to come in. And so oftentimes, you know, there's skepticism, because what do you want, what do I get out of it? And it's just good healthcare, we call it the healthcare jackpot, and that's what we truly believe. I had one of the Inglewood residents come in, it was a male, and for the first thirty minutes, he thought he was in the wrong place, because he didn't think that he deserved to be there, it was too nice. And I said, you are exactly where you're supposed to be. And so I just want to, to inform you and the residents of Inglewood that we are here, we want to partner with you. We are available to host different events if need be. I've already scheduled two with people here already today. I want you to think of us as a resource in the community. We provide complimentary transportation, which is a huge barrier. Sometimes you don't want to depend on someone else to have to pick you up and take you to your appointment. And our drivers, it's not random contracted drivers, we have our drivers. If something doesn't go right, you call me, and I deal with it right away, but rarely does that happen. So we focus on same-day appointments. So there's a lot to offer, you're available, you can come in and just see the building, you can tour the building. And so we're open, and I just want to let everyone know, we'll be having a one-year celebration coming up in a month, it'll be a week-long event. So I hope to see everyone, everyone there.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Alicia Q. Can?
Hi, how are you doing tonight?
Good, how are you?
I'm okay, I live in the Inglewood government housing, I've been there just over three years now, and I'm tired of living in the conditions that we live in. The directors... The directors and the people, they just don't care. I've had mold and mushrooms growing out of my bathroom for two years now. My family is sick all the time and nothing's being done at all. That's it. That's all I have to say.
I, I was giving some pictures. Hold on a second.
That's not mine. No, those aren't mine.
Okay. Now I assume you've already let that be known to, to the director, the staff?
The director's been to my house.
I, I saw the email. It came a couple of weeks ago, maybe, or a week and a half ago?
Months ago.
Months ago? And, and he said he was going to address certain things?
Yes, and he sent someone over and they tore a hole in my wall and it's been there ever since.
Tore a hole and just left a hole in it?
Left a hole in my wall and I still have mushrooms sprouting out.
What did they, what were they trying to do?
They were supposed to let it air out for about a week. And then come back, treat it, and then patch it back up like they always do.
Oh, that's been done before?
Yes.
And then they come, they come back?
Come back. Every year.
What, let me see. Your address on this?
Yes, it is.
Okay, I'll address it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Andrew Carter.
How's it going? My name is Andrew Carter. I'm the president of resident council in Inster Housing. Just wanted to talk a little bit about some of the deplorable condition that's going on in housing. Of course, you have pictures. You just heard from one of the residents. The resident council and some of the residents, we feel that we're at war with the executive, interim executive director and some of the commissioners. And, and that shouldn't be. We all should be working together to get rid of some of the problems that we have. You know, for the last few years, some of our residents in Inster Housing has been living with black mold, ceilings falling down, busted pipes, bed bugs, roaches, mice, bats, and a slew of other problems. And they're not going away. For the last couple of years, I've been talking about these same exact problems and nothing happened. Now understand, I come here to this meeting every other Monday. I sit down, don't say a word, nothing. Because I want to see if anyone's going to say anything about these conditions. And I understand that our life is in God's hands, but the living condition in housing are in your hands. So now we're here asking you, you know, what are you going to do? We have an executive director who shows up at people's houses, or interim, I should say, executive director, shows up at people's house, make a bunch of promises. And as, as you heard, nothing get done. That is ridiculous. That shouldn't be. I'm tired of going to this guy and asking him to do what he have to do. I understand he just got there. He made more promises than anyone when he first got there and nothing have happened. It's crazy. Sometime we, we have maybe some of the council people go and talk to some of our residents. They may be going just to talk to them about, you know, maybe, you know, selecting them again to run for their chair. But they don't hear that. They hear, well, what you gonna do about the problems? That's all they talk about. Our people, our council members shouldn't be getting jumped on by residents because of deplorable conditions.
Well, that's, we, we're supposed to be here. We're supposed, residents are supposed to call us.
Yep, that's true.
Residents have called me currently, in the past, about the conditions.
Right.
I mean, I was shocked when I heard that people had bats. I was like, who has bats in their house? And this was a couple of years ago. And, and you know, I'm not making excuses for anybody because I can't. But it seems like this problem that's just going on for a long time. You've been through three, three directors in the last three years, maybe? And we still talking about the same stuff.
Right.
So it, you know, it's not falling on deaf ears. It's just, there's no easy fix. But people want to see you doing something. And that's really what it comes down to. At least if you're working towards it, they may understand, you know. I know, I know housing was going through transition. Ozzy, you know that. You're there. With respect to the way it's ran, it got evaluated last year, was an eighty-three page assessment. It might have been over a hundred, I'm not sure. Different things that they, the HUD, Department of HUD, I'm sorry, HUD Office in Detroit asked them to do the change, make better. I know we're there in the process of making those changes. That is not excuse for why anybody's living in a situation like this. So I do understand kind of what's going on there. I'm not sure why these can't be remedied. I mean, I know the buildings are old and, you know, my, I want to tear them all down. So you know where I come from. I want to build new ones. There's different opinions on that. But if we can't clean these things up and make them nice, I don't want anybody to live in anything less than what I live in. That's, that's my mind frame. But that's why I want to build new. And that's another discussion for another day. And that's part of what we were doing in D C last week. Trying to make something happen, make that happen quicker. But we will address this tomorrow. You obviously know who the commissioners are. You deal with them. Commissioners decide who the executive director is. I know R F P is out.
I was going to ask, had this been brought to the board of commissioners already?
I'm, I'm positive.
Many, many times. Well, the picture's in the petition. This is my first time seeing this. I was just curious.
That's why I wanted to talk about this. Tomorrow, but the petition has been circulated all through housing and also through the city of Inster. And they, and not only are the people in housing, but also people that live in the city of Inster. Because they are really concerned about, because this doesn't only affect housing. This affects people that live in the city of Inster also. I mean, when you look at, when you look at all of us in a whole, we're not just housing. We're just, we, we all live in the city of Inster.
You're just residents. I mean, it, it doesn't matter if you live in housing.
That's what I'm saying. It doesn't matter where you live. And when you have someone, you have to, I mean, you guys are sitting on the outside looking in. But when you have someone who really doesn't care, because like, like you said, everything's changing. Their petition was sent downtown because, for a reason. You have a person that acts one way in front of you and acts a totally different way when he's with residents. Because when you come in and you, you go into town, into Twin Towers and you act, treat them like they're children and you act like bed bugs are no, is no big problem. You take your hand and squish out a bed bug and tell this man, oh, that's not a big deal. How can you say that to, to a, a resident and you take your finger and, you know, like, oh, that's not a big deal. It's not a big deal. It's a big deal. Because I'm not trying to be funny. You're not going to take no bed bugs to wherever you live at. You go, you know, I know where you live and I know you're not going to take none home with you. But it's not, but you're going to think it's not, it's a big deal for you to take your finger and walk up and go down on the floor and kill the bed bug and come back up and say, oh, we're going to try and treat this and we have to go by protocol. It's, it's not like that anymore. That's not how you treat people. We, you know, you treat me one way in front of you and in front of commissioners, but when you behind their back, you want to treat me like I'm dead. And it don't work like that. We have people that when he came in, he said, oh, look behind you, look on the side of you, look in front of you, look, but tomorrow you won't be there. You know? Then you turn around and you.
You talking about the employees?
Employees and also he treats the residents like that. So it's like, it's like, when you treat people like they don't matter, or you treat me like tomorrow, tomorrow like I'm going to be on the, on the auction box, like you're going to sell me like I'm a slave, don't treat me like that. Because I matter. You don't treat me like that when I'm paying my rent. But you treat me like that when I'm, when I'm not around the commissioners or when I'm not around you, Mr. Mayor, or when I'm not around any of the council members, you're going to treat me like, oh, yes, you're fine. But when I'm not, you're going to treat me like I'm, I'm trash. And not only, you know, it's the residents. He treats them like trash. And then, but you don't tell the truth about the community center. You go out and you don't talk to them, but you don't tell them that you're going to come in and bring a private daycare in. You just say, oh, I'm going to bring in a daycare, but you don't say it's a private daycare that's coming in that they won't be able to afford. You don't say that, uh, DHS, they, if they have DHS, DHS only going to pay a portion.
Right.
And then if they are working, how they going to afford that? Let's be realistic here.
It's a whole lot of things.
So there's a lot of stuff that's going on that you don't know about, Mr. Mayor. And that none of you council members don't know, because it's not, it's not all being out there. Yes, the commissioners do make the choice, but even the commissioners don't even know everything that's going on. Because they smile, because he smiles in your face, grins in your face, and then behind your back, he's treating everybody like crap.
I think the commissioners do know. Um, because you guys have been telling.
Right.
You've been calling me? You've been calling, you've been talking to them?
I'm a.
I haven't, I haven't really been saying too much because I try not to.
Well, let me say, well, the, the residents, they have, they call the news. Uh, I've got a, a couple of calls from the news media asking me question that the resident called. Uh, I don't know how long I can hold them off, but, uh, I'm, I'm be trying to work through some of this stuff.
That's not your job to hold them off.
Hmm? Well, I'm, well, I know, I'm, I'm not returning any calls either because there's things that I'm trying to, I'm trying to get together myself, you know, so.
They're tired of not.
Right.
Now, it's my understanding that the permanent position has been posted or should be posted soon?
What, the permanent position for executive director?
Well, I hope it's not Paul Bollinger.
Well, I'm just saying that, you know, Ozzy, you have access to all the commissioners, you have access to us. This is going to be posted. People are going to be interviewed. Now, we've been through this process twice now.
We don't have access. You think we have access?
No, we don't. We have a housing, we have a housing commission, don't even want to deal with. I don't understand that.
We even have to ask access to get into the envision center. And we have keys and codes and we have to still have, have to call and ask if it's okay if we can get into there. So we don't have access.
Wow.
Too much going on.
Also, Levo.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
So on the end of the police department, I have a few things coming up that I'm pretty excited about. So this coming up Friday is movie night at the police department. We only have two more left, October, I'm sorry. Right, yeah, September and October. This month we're watching Trolls. And movie will start around eight thirty. We'll have free fresh popped hot cor, hot dogs, popcorn, snow cones. If it's a little bit too cold, we'll probably switch to hot chocolate. Just a fair warning, you might not get your snow cone. But we do have some stand-up heaters we'll put in the parking lot so that way it, it has some warmth for you. That is going to be, like I said, this Friday, eight thirty P M, police department parking lot, watching Trolls. The following day, on Saturday, the twenty-second, will be Inster's first annual fuel injected carnival. What that is, the classic car and motorcycle show, and I'm pretty excited about that one. We are partnering with I Can, F and R Automotive, three one five North, and Frozen Moments to put this on. It's going to be on the southwest corner of Inster and Michigan Avenue in the parking lot of the town center by the Dollar General. And we're going to have a bunch of classic cars and motorcycles, food trucks nearby with a variety of different types of food people will like. We will also have free T-shirts for the first hundred people in attendance, as well as dash plaques. I think we have about fifty of them that we're going to give out to the first fifty cars registered. You can early register. That's your only way to guarantee a T-shirt and a commemorative dash plaque. Day of registration will be taken on first come, first served. So please come. It's going to be a lot of fun. It's going to be from three to seven P M. And hopefully this goes well and we can keep doing it every year. Another thing, Coffee with the Cop. Um, October third at ten A M, it's actually National Coffee with the Cop Day. So all across the nation, same time, same day. But citizens and police officers will be sitting down together to have a cup of coffee and discuss neighborhood concerns. I hope you will join us. Flyers for all three of these is over there on the table and come out and visit. Also, I would like to say that the Inster Task Force and the Inster Fire Department is partnering for this year's five K Run Walk. Mayor Nolan has generously offered to sponsor thirty Insters children to run in the, run or walk in this event for free. I am currently taking registration for that. So if you have a child that you think would benefit from the Run Walk, please reach out to me and I can get you guys signed up for free. My number is three one three four hundred five three eight seven. Also want to take a quick second to, um, say, you know, Miss, uh, Ms. Gardner, I'm going to miss her a lot. She's the reason we have a bake sale. It was her idea. She wanted to support the police department. She did a great job. So good person was lost there and I reach out to her family and friends. Thank you.
Thank you. Reverend George Williams.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. I thought maybe I'd get a smile on the face. Y'all don't smile no more? When y'all running for election, everybody was smiling. Amen, especially when we became winners. Amen. I just come back to ask for a favor, Mr. Mayor and Council. I thought maybe it'd be appropriate to come here and ask you all. Them three flags behind you, you know, we are, we are hosting beautification, uh, national beautification here in the city of Inster Thursday, and we would like to know, can we use them three flags over at the golf course and we'll have to bring them back?
As long as you take care of them.
Yeah, we, 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 we'll put them in the hands of, uh, uh, Mr. Business. You told me to make, I got to ask the man and stuff, man. Make the city flag.
Anybody have any problem with them using the flag?
No, but speaking of flags, you, I, I think there's the complex need to set up flags over there.
How you going to get to the complex, tell me some flags?
Well, you know, we got all these people coming to town, so we don't want to have to deal down. So we just ask you to use the free flag.
Sure. You in charge of all three of them.
Right.
Okay. So you responsible.
I do that. I, I, I get them from, through the clerk. She, she get them. That's a great move.
Thank you. Alright, thanks. Jeff Carter.
I just want to, I'd just like to remind everybody, hello, city council, of the meeting that's next Monday for the cultivation of marijuana and a processing facility right down the street. I think it should be a concern to many residents. They should come and voice their opinion next week.
What's the address?
Here.
Now, what's the address of the, the facility?
Oh, the facility is for the one at two four two four John Daly. It's, um, seven point seven seven acres of marijuana plantation.
That's how they, that's what they call it?
Well, cultivation. Okay, thank you.
Alright, thanks.
Next Monday?
Yes, planning commission meeting.
Oh, planning commission. Oh.
Willie Johnson.
That's a lot of land.
Somebody help Mr. Johnson up.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, hello, city council.
Good evening.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is Willie Johnson again, by public demand. I just stopped by here tonight. Put for a couple, two, uh, complaints. I thought of my street. They haven't been, two guys was through one man truck and some amateurs for the summer. They have picked my street real bad. That's one of my main things, but that's my, my major thing. My major thing is police department. I'm going to ask the mayor, Mr. Mayor, how many police officers, bona fide police officers we have in Inster?
We just lost one.
Tell it publicly.
What's the total number, twenty-eight, twenty-nine? Thirty.
How many?
Thirty.
Thirty? Well, okay, you've got thirty. Now, I'm not talking about no security officers dressed like police officers. I'm talking about police, getting police sirens.
Yeah, thirty.
But let's be true, we got trumped in this place. We do laugh happy if we're going on, but I know. You can't fool me because I came from the bottom up to now. Okay? Now, we don't have enough police officers in Inster. This past week, I had experience, I couldn't get to the mayor, I couldn't get to the police chief. I couldn't. Too much red tape. Now, where I came from and my type of work that I retired from, I was assistant chief by a safety officer for the state of Michigan, retired. I was a former Wayne County deputy sheriff, Wayne County, I'm retired. You look at me, you laugh, you don't know what you laughing about. Now, our people got a true battle in this, in Inster. I know they're going to try to cut me off. You can't buy a local bread in Inster for a black person. Don't have no dry cleaners. You don't have, they cheat you at the gas station. Make sure you get a receipt where you can buy your gas. I know. Okay? Well, my main thing is I had, one of my neighbors had a terrible incident happen over last weekend. I won't get into details, but I find it necessary that I just talk to somebody in charge. You try to get to him, hey, I could get to the governor's chief easier than I can to talk to him in Inkster. I tried to get over the seat, too much red tape, they wouldn't let me see him, and I didn't get no return calls. Look at me, I'm past ninety years old, okay, I know where you're getting from, I know how hard they fight, I'm from World War Two. I'm a fighter man, Navy man. I was thanked by President Truman, thanked by the Navy, Secretary of Navy, okay? I was drafted by Roosevelt, I was one of the first blacks that vote. I voted overseas, the white boy said, we ain't no more than you, they scared of Japanese just like I was. We ain't no more than you, we're gonna fix this who you guys, they vote, we voted for Roosevelt. Roosevelt died in office, since I got back, I worked hard. I started, I've been on welfare, one check in my life, my wife and I, we almost hung, we were hungry before we got that check, nineteen dollars. Now, this city gotta do better than that. Mr. Mayor, I, you gotta do better than this, we need a form, another something else I gotta say. You young people go dancing and bouncing up and down and everything, and keep calling yourself happy, okay? You vote for, uh, the government, vote for city clerk under the mayor, that is right. I know, I know they're gonna get at me, this, this, I'm gonna live a little while longer, okay? I ain't planning on dying soon. Now, we need, we need the, the people, if the mayor controls everything, high and fire, everybody got to do exactly what he say, or you'll get rid of him. I'm, I'm telling you how like it is, now.
Mr. Johnson?
Okay, you have to turn me off.
Oh, okay, your three minutes, I run.
Thank you, I talked to my councilwoman, I don't wanna talk about the incident that happened to my neighbor, it was too terrible. But it was terrible, and I go to the newspapers, it was telling the city wide open. I kept it to myself. Now, Mr. Mayor? You the boss. Now, I feel that anybody in here, if they have any emergency, where they need to see the police chief, his secretary should make it available for him to meet with him and talk with him, they need to meet with you too, Mr. Mayor, you are hard to get to. Now, you should look at me and get mad if you want, but with time to election, it's gonna change.
Mr. Johnson, Mr. Johnson, have you, have you ca- have you called me? Have you called me?
Yes, sir.
Recently?
Pardon?
Last couple of weeks, you called me?
I'm a little hard to understand.
Have you called me in the last couple of weeks?
I called, I called you, and I couldn't get through on your phone, it's all mixed up. I never did get through, but I tried to leave a message. I came to City Hall, and I talked with the city clerk, and I talked with my councilwoman, I got on his back too. Don't think I let him off easy. They'll tell you anything to get rid of it, that is it. This city gotta grow, it's dying. I'm telling you, they can tell you what they want to, but it's dying, now, with the police department, I mentioned, if we could have a chief given the tools he need to do the job, not know have to, and so, the city, you all got to get together. The young people risk gonna go up, one more thing I wanna say too.
Okay.
Store you some canned good food, we could have some terrible weather, but I predict this, this thing going on now, now, I'm South, I'm from South Carolina. I predict that a month ago, if my friend was here to tell you, I didn't know what was coming, I had a feeling, and I got it from the birds and the dogs.
Mr. Johnson?
They'll let you know. Mr. Mayor?
Mm-hmm.
We gotta do better in this city.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I appreciate your time, sir.
No problem.
Very kind, but fix it so if any of these people have an emergency need to talk with the chief or police, or you, you talked to them when you were running for election.
I'm still talking.
I serve four terms, I have councilman here, I'm talking because I brought you a million dollars in this city. When I was councilman, I was beat by one of the terrorists, one, one, one term, the people want me to come back, city, you all you do, put the name on a ballot, people do all the way. My wife said, no, it's don't go back.
Okay, Mr. Johnson, we gotta keep it moving.
I'm here because I, I see the need for me to be here, okay, you can get the, the police to put me on, I was one of them too. I'm not dying.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
The same guy. God should ever let it happen to you, I'm talking for a neighbor.
Okay, Mr. Johnson, we gotta. Thank you, thank you. Okay, uh, Councilwoman Wiley. Oh, I'm sorry, not you yet, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, sir.
Um, okay, Inkster, you showed up and showed out, uh, for the August primary election. It is now time for the general elections, so I need you to show up and show out again. Um, the last day to register to vote is October ninth. A V applications have gone out on this past Friday, and the ballots will be here on this Friday. So, if you're in need of an A V application, please contact the city clerk's office, and we will be more than happy to help you, thank you.
Mr. Treasurer.
Alright, no comments.
Mr. Mayor? Yeah, that's what I was gonna say, yeah. Yes. Yes, to the viewing audience and to the residents at home, there is no more, um, straight ticket voting. So, you have to go through each individual, um, candidate and vote for the candidate that you would like. But there is also a proposal that is on the ballot, uh, when you flip the ballot over, there's a proposal on the back that will bring this back, will bring back straight party, um, voting, so, as for now, there is no straight ticket, um, voting. So, you have to go through and mark each candidate. Okay? And if you have any questions or concerns, you can ask, uh, contact the city clerk's office. If you're voting at the polling locations and you have any concerns, you, um, you can ask your election inspectors. Alright, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask the city clerk something while she's on that line? Okay, you know, I thought when we went to the, um, to the polls in August, that a lot of ballots were being spoiled because they didn't know how to vote, they, you know, they was voting one way and it was the opposite. Is there any way that they could have something on the outside, you can't have that, right? Okay, okay, that's what I was wondering, they let these people, I mean, you know, because it was a lot of spoiled ballots.
There was. The most I could do was. Yeah, somebody else, you know, outside, yeah, can have it. Yeah.
Yeah, because, I mean, you know what, because it was a long line, and, and it was a lot of people that had spoiled ballots, it took up a lot of time.
The most our, um, election inspectors can do is they can tell you it's a two-sided ballot, you know, to make sure that you vote both sides.
Okay.
Okay, Mr. Treasurer?
No comments.
Councilwoman Wiley?
I'll try and be brief. The, um, I'd like to thank all of the ICAN members who volunteered to assist with the car show, thank you. Um, also, the fourth Thursday of each month, we have a District Three advisory meeting here at five o'clock um, in City Hall chambers. Also, directly after that, we have an ICAN meeting, um, at six o'clock, here in council chambers, that's it.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Thank you, ma'am.
Um, I'm glad to see Mr. Anderson here tonight, cause I had a question that I was gonna ask. I think I can ask it now, maybe I can get some responses from him, and my question is related to you, you mentioned something about it. But besides Middlebelt, the roads running through Inkster and other cities, wh- what's happening with repairs and improvements being done to those roads? Is anything coming up soon that's gonna impact the whole county?
There is no, right now, there is no plan that the executive has put forward that's going to really accelerate it, and that's what I hope to see. Because it is state of the county, as he indicated, that they were going to do something to pull more money out, or to put it in the road. And, uh, it's, it's, I'm not, I'm not setting, I mean, uh, because there's not any plan right now that in a big way is going to address the concerns that we have in all the three cities that are represented. And we're not alone, though, because I'm looking at what's happening, we've got bridges over Heinz Drive on county roads that bridges now are closed, because they can't handle the weight that they were designed to handle originally. And fire engines, fire rescue, can't get across any way, so it's, it's all over Wayne County, and, uh, but it's something that the commission has been pushing hard on to get.
So, we are getting a little something along Middlebelt, from Michigan Avenue to.
So, it's only, it's only year after next, but that's, that's on the, uh, that's on the plan right now.
Yeah.
Wish I could tell you more, the communities get together, uh, with the Wayne County Department of Public Service, and, uh, and there's a, there's a process that I've only recently learned what it is, uh, that they get together and prioritize roads, put in their record. And I understand they vote on, maybe Mr. Mitchell can elaborate on it, but, uh, but they, they vote on it in the county meeting, not on the commission meeting. I would be wanting to see more of our county dollars going towards those roads.
Well, thank you. Um, Toni Bailey, I, I mentioned her at our last council meeting, um, has done a wonderful job in the city, she continued to do the same thing. But I, I wanted to point out an issue that came about after we cleaned up the last time, between Avondale and Cherry Hill. After we cleaned up, I, myself, along with everybody else, I dealt, dealt with Middlebelt. A week or two later, we had a truck to come through, and trash was everywhere in the middle of the street, now they've taken it off the street, and have put it on the side of the street, on the west side of, uh, on, on the east side of, of, um, Middlebelt. And I mean, it's just laying there. So, I wanna get with you, Ms. Bailey, so I can get some bags, since I worked in that area in the past, so I can get that cleaned up, because we had to clean up, things was in place. Next thing I have is, uh, Parkwood, on Parkwood, between Parkwood and Rosewood, Long Central, we're getting the dumping again. Uh, there's a couple of vacant houses right there on that corner, I think if you recall, we cleaned up over there back last year, cleaned it out. Now, we got sofas, couches, the, 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 grass is growing up over there and so forth, but I'm just putting it out there, so maybe we can get, um.
We got a contractor, we can get over there and clean it up, just make sure Bivens knows where it is, corner which, which streets, Parkwood or Rosewood.
Yes. Long Central, right.
Okay, make sure we get the grass cut too.
That's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Mitchell?
Uh, good evening, everyone, we are moving right along in the city of Inkster, I don't know how many of you have noticed the work being done on, um, Michigan Avenue, there's some different kind of stuff hanging with, with the lights.
Oh, yeah, right.
Remember, they came and they offered to put up the emergency lights for us, well, that's happening. I noticed them yesterday, and today they were actually working, so now, when there's a fire run, those lights will go off, go on to stop traffic. So, I hope we'll be able to tell everybody how it works, so they'll understand it. But I'm just excited when I see those kinds of things going on in the city. Uh, other cities have had that kind of system for a long time, and so, we're playing catch-up, but we're moving right along. Another thing that I want you to know is, we're a little slow getting the information out, but we talked, uh, I talked last month about, last meeting, about the grown folks block party, this is an opportunity for us to all get together and celebrate the idea that we do have the right to vote. And we want to invite those people who come to participate and try to win a one hundred dollar cash prize for bringing the most people to the block party who didn't vote in the last election. So, that means you gotta go find folk that you know who didn't bother to go out and vote, but are registered voters, bring them to the block party, and you may win one hundred dollars cash. It is imperative that we exercise the right to vote, it is getting more and more critical every day. And this is our way of, um, trying to bring our community together in a unified way, just to get people to understand the power that they hold when they go to the polls to vote. We don't endorse any one particular person, we don't endorse any issues, we just, our overarching theme is you must go vote. Our city clerk has volunteered to be at the block party, where you'll be able to actually see sample ballots and talk to her about how to mark, if you take a sample ballot home, you kinda got it down to a science, and when you get into the polls to vote, it won't take you all day to mark your ballot, because they've made it very difficult for us to do now. So, that's, that's all I have at this juncture, but I just want to invite you to the block pa- block party, it will go up on Eventbrite, and we will have flyers here at City Hall and around town. October nineteenth, six o'clock P M., rec center parking lot, if the weather's good, we'll be outside. If the weather is not good, we're gonna have an old-fashioned sock hop inside in the gym, okay? Thank you.
Thanks. Councilwoman Howard?
No comments.
Well, you've been missing action for a mo- I know you have something to say, tell us how you're doing.
Well, I'm doing fine, thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you, I'm doing fine, it's coming along, still a long haul, but hopefully I get there.
No more breakdancing for you.
No more nothing right now, alright, thank you.
Alright, Councilwoman Chisler? Mayor Proten?
Hello, um, Crescent Street Block Club will be hosting a meeting on October the eleventh, two thousand eighteen, at six P M. At the Booker Dozier Recreation Complex. Crime Stoppers will be on hand to discuss different ways to get involved with helping to curtail crime in the city of Inkster. So, that's October the eleventh. Also, uh, the Inkster citizens who care are hosting their annual Coach for Kids luncheon. It will be held on October the sixth at twelve noon at the Rec- Booker Dozier Recreation Complex. Donation is ten dollars, all proceeds will go to Coach for Kids. That's all I have, to Inkster.
Alright, real quick, we have, uh, one of our residents, Tammy Warren, want us to announce.
That's the Crescent Street, uh, Block Club.
Did you talk about Crime Stoppers?
Yeah.
Okay. Before we leave, we need a, a meeting date for all district-wide meeting, or you guys need a meeting date in October, for your citywide district meeting. Okay, we have, uh, Lunch with the Mayor on Thursday, come out on the twentieth, eat and talk about local issues at the rec center at noon. We also, once you feed yourself on Thursday, Friday, uh, your mayor will be the ringmaster of the Universal Soul Circus. So, if you'd like to come out, bring the kids, the grandkids, I will be embarrassing the entire city on, in front of everybody. I hear that I have to dance and do some other stuff.
Oh, Lord.
And if you don't like me, you come watch me get mauled by the tiger, so.
What is that?
That's gonna be your Friday evening at seven P M. at Shane Park. If you, uh, go on, go online and, and punch in the code Inkster, you'll get a discount on your tickets.
Oh, do we get a discount, how much?
Uh, I don't know. Twenty-one dollars and fifty cents, twenty-three. Okay. Um, so, if you're not going to movie night, come on out to the Universal Soul Circus, Friday, twenty-first. Friday, the twenty-first, seven o'clock. Alright, that's the guy, that's all I have, uh, appreciate everybody coming out.
Weren't we supposed to get a date?
Yeah, the date, I think October second and fourth was, I saw on the email chain.
Right, that's fine.
Any of those days good for everybody?
That's good for me.
It's good for everybody?
Which one?
I like third better.
You like what?
The third.
He just trying to be different.
Third, third is too many people's church night. I try to stay away from Wednesdays.
Oh, on a Wednesday.
Bible, Bible study.
Bible study.
They got choir rehearsals on Tuesdays and Thursdays.
You got what?
Choir rehearsals on Tuesdays and Thursdays.
Oh, man.
What, what was that date? Let me see, October si.
The nineteenth?
Okay, uh, what about the following week, y'all? The ninth, oh, you, you, you're booked up every week on Tuesday, Thursday. And you don't wanna do Wednesday, so what about that Monday? What about Monday, Monday? Oh, you got Planning Commission.
So what about on Thursday?
What about Thursday the eleventh?
He said every Tuesday.
Thursday what?
The eleventh choir rehearsal.
For what?
For the all-district meeting.
He said he has choir rehearsal Tuesday.
Oh, yeah.
You, you said, oh, I thought you said eleven o'clock, okay.
What day are you available, Mayor Pro Temp?
Friday.
Friday?
What is that? He's available on Friday.
I think the good of the many outweigh the good of the few.
What time's your choir rehearsal?
Six thirty.
You don't, just don't wanna be there?
I, well, by charter, I do have a team of people that would do one, make a report.
Okay.
So it's not like I don't wanna be there, I do, I do by the charter.
Okay, so then we're back to the second or the fourth, which, which day, second?
It doesn't matter, second is fine.
Second, alright with everyone?
Yeah.
Okay, alright, I told, y'all need to vote or we okay with the second?
What time?
We can do consensus.
What time, six thirty? What time, six thirty?
Late.
Six thirty.
How can we do it?
How can we do it five o'clock? Or what time you get off, Chisel?
Oh, I'm sorry.
What is that date from here? Six thirty? Yeah, we'll lose Chisel if we do it any early.
Yeah.
And, 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 and that's for. I know, all-district meeting.
All-district.
Just make a motion.
I move that we, uh, host our all-district Citizens Advisory.
Well, go ahead, it sounds good.
Well, when I make a motion, it will be official.
Yep, yep, it will be official.
Uh, I move that we, uh, have our all-district Citizens Advisory Committee meeting of the city of Inxter on, uh, what's the date?
The second was the second.
Second of October, Tuesday, October second at six thirty PM, where are we going to be?
Here.
Here, in City Council Chambers.
You got a second?
Support.
Uh, it's been moved and supported, discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? It passes, can I motion to adjourn?
Motion for adjournment.
Then, it's been moved and supported, discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay?